Okay, the time is now seven PM. I'd like to call this town in Plainfield Board of Selecting meeting to order on September 27th. And ask that you please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider it a republic which stands on its own nation under its own liberty and justice.
And roll call.
Art Cagan.
Kathy Tendrick.
Kathy Cagan. And item C, which is to make motion to approve meeting minutes from 9:13, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes tonight, 13, 2021.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, which is public comment. If there's anybody in the public that wishes to speak, now's the time. If you'd like to have the microphone, just state your name, that helps us out to recording.
My name's Rowley Deans. And I was just, I came here to the one in your office today to see what was going on with the changing rooms in the men's locker room downstairs.
Yep. If you don't mind, I can actually do a follow-up if that's okay. I think when we spoke about the changing of your address, I did mention?
No, no, the change, we had talked two years ago now about having changing rooms put into the men's locker room.
Oh, yes.
So that the children could change without feeling...
I can't quite hear you, I'm sorry.
Without feeling appropriate?
Yeah.
But it's been two years, and there hasn't been anything done yet, so I wanted to see what was the plan for that.
We were actually drafting a plan. Ron Roberts is our maintenance person, we're drafting a plan for that. The problem we're having is actually the ADA complying down there and the spacing. So we're gonna get with Rick, who's our building inspector, and have him give us a draft plan for what we can put up there. And I do apologize, you look just like someone that came into my office today for something else. Oh, with a mask, you never tell.
Yeah.
But yeah, we are working on that right now. We would like to have that done within a few months. I know what we're doing right now is we're asking people to go, the boys to go around the corner, go into that men's room area, to change there and come back out. It is difficult, it is very difficult. But the problem we have in the men's room is the spacing. It is very, very difficult to add more things in there. But we're looking to see if we can do something that fits the ADA compliances, has a space you can move in and out, and also make a little chair accessible as well.
Okay.
Okay?
Because I just saw the family room, right, he won't go into the women's room, so...
Yes.
Okay.
What I would like to do is this, if you wouldn't mind giving me a call tomorrow, I'm gonna make sure I get your name, number, and what we'll do is we'll follow it up on a weekly basis until we kind of have a resolution.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the public wishes to speak? If there are none, we go into the whole business of which we have none, and we go right into new business item F1. Consider an act on tax refunds as requested by the tax collector for a total of $412.75, which the first is Beth P. Group, $274.21. James P. Goffier, $14.17. Dennis Delcadelio, I guess it is, Delcadelio, I'll mess it up every time. Delcadelio, $124.37 for the total of $412.75. Any discussion?
I make a motion to act on the tax refunds totaling $412.75 as stated.
I'll second that.
Thank you, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 2, discuss and act on approving APR funding for the Eastern Connecticut Land Bank. If you take a look at section 2 of your book, you'll notice there are a few things in there for your reading pleasure. One was the Eastern Connecticut Land Bank becoming a reality article, and then the next one is a slideshow, and then after that is actual pictures of the area that we're talking about for... That's the wrong one. Put it in the wrong space.
There's a map here.
Yeah, there is a map.
In fact.
Yep, there we go. I did have the pleasure of meeting with Wayne, who will be doing the presentation tonight, Ollie, and also Mary Ann, and we talked over some of the issues that were in front of Eastern Connecticut Land Bank. And I would actually at this time turn it over to you, Wayne, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
And then we can speak to the selectmen.
Thank you, Kevin. For the record, Wayne Bogdan, I'm a resident of Ashford, I'm an environmental consultant and the vice president of Eastern Connecticut Land Bank. Thanks very much for allowing me to address the board of selectmen tonight. So on behalf of, I have a short presentation on behalf of the land bank, I'd like to present, welcome any questions during or after, but I wanted to give you a little bit of a rundown about what the land bank is, what we hope to do particularly in Plainfield and Musa, with the former command, what we'll call the former command properties, actually multiple properties. And also to talk to you about where we're going with that, what our challenges are, our successes to date, and where we hope to go, and how the town might be able to help us out. So we've got a presentation here. It might be easier if we take it. I'm not sure if I can full screen it, Ron. I can't see it without my other glasses. Is it a view, right? Like a view? Is there a slide view?
Uh, up here.
Up, up higher?
Yeah, on the red, up a little higher. Yep. Clicking that one for a second, and nope. Slideshow over here to the...
Oh, here we go.
It should say, "From beginning."
Okay. So you may not be familiar with land banks, in particular with Connecticut, brownfield land banks. I just wanted to give you our mission here. We're partnering with municipalities in Eastern Connecticut to support the return of distressed, underutilized, lighted brownfield and historic properties to productive uses, consistent with local plans of conservation and development. That's the chromosome, the last I remember being from this slide, Mary Ann. So I've got a few, basically five topics I want to go through. And what is a brownfield land bank? So as an environmental consultant for 30 years, I used to run into this, especially Eastern Connecticut, for years. Worked with towns, every town wanted to do something about their, about their brownfield problems. Every town around this area has multiple old mills and factories, and every town would approach me and say, "Wouldn't it be great if, couldn't we do something, you know, if?" And there was never a really good path forward. It was a struggle, it was costly, it was very time-consuming, and towns often didn't have the resources to tackle these properties. They often wished that someone would kind of ride in on their white horse and solve the problem for them, but it rarely happened. So 20, and this was obviously a pervasive problem across the state and across the country. And Connecticut took a pretty bold act in 2017 and passed the Brownfield, Connecticut Brownfield Land Bank legislation, which enabled corporations to be formed to basically be registered and certified by the state as brownfield land banks, and gave us a whole bunch of tools in a toolbox in order to help communities tackle these problems. Some of these are, you know, help to remediate and redevelop brownfields. We also can actually act almost like a municipality, we're eligible for grants from the state, we also seek federal funding assistance, and a whole slew of other benefits. We qualify as, we can qualify for liability protection, and the best thing I can tell you about land banks is, from a municipal standpoint, is that we can take on things that a town wouldn't want to do, couldn't do, you know, but we would work on behalf of the town to try to fix brownfield problems. Yeah.
Could you explain the liability relief programs?
Sure. So Connecticut has a number of different liability relief programs that are available to municipalities and actually to individuals as well. Obviously, if you're going to be granted some kind of liability relief, there's certain conditions you have to meet, and not everybody qualifies for all of them. A lot of these were put in place in the last 15 or 20 years. Some of them even were recent, and they were essentially designed so that if you entered into a program and you did certain things to clean up a property, you'd get a covenant not to suit. The state would grant you basically this liability protection. It's, it's, it's very broad, a lot of these liability relief programs, they don't cover every conceivable thing, but if you do everything you're supposed to do, the state gives you this liability relief. It's like cash in the bank for a property because it's transferable, which means that a prospective buyer of a property that's been cleaned up in accordance with these conditions, that liability relief rides with the land, and that any prospective buyer comes along and sees that as a great thing. If you're familiar with Connecticut and compared to other states, a lot of other states have what's called the "no further action" letter or something like that, where the state agency says, "You've done everything you need to do, we're gonna give you this." Connecticut doesn't have such a thing, they don't have such a mechanism, but this is, in many ways, it's even better. But as I said, you don't, not everybody qualifies for it, land banks do. Does that answer your question?
Absolutely.
Okay. So this is just a kind of a list of all of the different functions, not even all of them, some of the different functions that a land bank can do. You know, we can investigate a site, clean it up, we can take title to a property, we can perform market analyses, we can work with the town, the prospective developers, to try to figure out what's the best use for of a property once it's cleaned up. We can clear title issues, a lot of these things involve a lot of, you know, involvement with attorneys and title search companies, surveyors and engineers and what have you, but we can basically do whatever is necessary to make a, make a clear path forward for a property so that it can be redeveloped. The one that's highlighted here is conducting site assessments and remediation planning, that's where we're at right now with the Musa sites, but that's why that's highlighted. I wanted to highlight that just to show you all of the other things that we intend to do afterward, and that we likely will have to do for Musa. These are just the, the, of interest introductions to the land bank, because as I mentioned, Mary Ann and I worked kind of spearheaded the creation of this in 2018, 2019. We became a nonprofit corporation, we're certified as a Connecticut Brownfield Land Bank, we got our 501(c)(3) certificate from IRS, and we have our board of directors, 11 members, and I'm sure you have one more in the room right now, Kathy and Mary Ann and myself. So we have four.
Four.
Are here. So Plainfield is well represented on the board. And the important thing to keep in mind is, we couldn't take any geographic area we wanted as a Connecticut Brownfield Land Bank. We focused on Connecticut, on Eastern Connecticut, because brownfields here are probably more impactful to the local economy than almost anywhere else, and there's plenty of it. So we don't need to go far afield to find places that need our assistance. So we have 11 board members listed here. So our number one priority right now, and for the foreseeable future, is Musa. The Musa site properties, we, we see it as our, it is our first grant that we received, and we see it as our main focus. It's a place where we're, we're cutting our teeth, I guess you'd say, but we're also diving into the deep end of the pool because it's a big project, but it's, you know, it's an audacious kind of a thing to tackle, and we're excited about doing it. We're excited about the prospect of being very successful in doing it and moving on to, to other projects in Plainfield and neighboring communities. But, you know, we, these are some of the things that we intend to do, you know, with it, is to work with the town, work with the state agencies, DECD, work with the federal agencies, EPA, work with Command, who has an obligation and they have money set aside to do some of the cleanup, but not all of it, and trying to make sure that we align all of the resources that we can, so that the best use of the property is realized for the town. That may or may not be the exact outcome of what Command wants to do, and that's what we, we want to work as OPAs on, to make sure that as they clean up the property, that all of the things that make the property more enticing to a prospective developer are met. So we see that as a main focus of our, of our work. And then down the road, after the grant is done, we expect to continue to work on behalf of, for the town, you know, to all of the other hurdles that are going to be encountered as property is cleaned up, and deal with title issues, and whatever else might be, might be coming. I think you guys maybe have a map like this, but this shows the 12 properties that were, that were being applied for the assessment grant from DECD. The main ones are obviously former command properties, the old properties, and then there's some accessory ones. And up at the top of the screen, kind of hidden, is the former Keystone Cleaners property next to the fire station. Our progress to date, you know, we've developed a model that was enticing to DECD, we were able to secure a grant, and that was twofold benefit to us. We got the grant, but we also got a lot of people on board with us with the idea of, "This is a great project, this is great." You know, they granted us the money, but to do that, we had to convince people at DECD that this was a project that was worth working with us on. So there's sort of a long-term relationship building with state agencies, which is important, and we want to continue to get their support. We did get the $200,000 grant, as I said, it's the very first grant that the land bank has received, and we're currently in the process of trying to negotiate an agreement with the Command Corporation, as I said, to try to get them to do the things that they need to do, but also acknowledging and working in cooperation with the land bank so that it, that when they do their cleanup, it's, we play a role in that, and the town gets to have a voice, and we get to have a voice, to make sure that they're not doing something in the cleanup that might, might not be the best outcome for the property. As an example, for, there's a thing called a land use restriction on properties that a company like Command can say, "Well, we're gonna put a land use restriction on the property that maybe says, 'We can't let it be residential, we're gonna clean up only to industrial standards, or we're not gonna dig over here.'" Well, they may not have redevelopment in mind, they may just wanna, you know, clean up the property to meet their obligations under the law, and we have some leverage there to work with them to try to make sure that we're getting the best outcome for the property. So we've had a lot of these successes, I've just mentioned the challenges. Our, winning the grant is a, is a great success, but it's a huge challenge. We, brownfield assessment and remediation and redevelopment is a very complicated process. There's an awful lot of professionals that are involved with a project like this. There's always troubles that come about, there's legal issues, and as I mentioned, title issues, and there may be survey issues, floodplain issues, engineering and technical issues that all need to be resolved. We don't have any staff right now, nor do we have any budget to get any staff members. So what we've basically been doing, we've got this great grant, and now as a bunch of volunteer board members, we're having to do work at night, weekends, to try to be the corporation that we are, which is, we're now in a cleanup and development scenario, as if we were a fully operating development company, and we have zero staff. So we have no money, and the grant money that we have is earmarked for, dedicated for the assessment and cleanup, a very tiny amount of it can be used for any administrative expenses. So we have no, no staff, we have no money to hire staff, and we don't have any, we're seeking good funds right now, we've been very active in trying to get foundation grants and things like that. They're generally fairly modest, they're not enough to be able for us to say we can hire any staff members. And so what we really need is an executive director who would be a full-time paid position. So the last slide here is how the town of Plainfield helped Eastern Connecticut Brown, uh, Land Bank. We're making a very bold request of the American Recovery, the ARPA, money of $300,000, and it's, it's a very bold grant, and hopefully it sets the stage for the things that we would be needing to do. So what we would, what we would use that money for would be to help fund a full-time executive director for separate benefits and expenses, for somebody to come in and do all the heavy lifting of managing the project that we've got the grant for, working with attorneys to, to leverage the resources of Command, which are millions of dollars, do that in a way that's, that's best for the property, best for the town. Pay for legal services. Up till this point, we've had, we've been beneficiaries of some very generous legal help, but it's, it's blossomed in a way that everybody always knows it will happen, but everybody dreads it. You get, you get into these projects, and there's just one legal hurdle after another, you're always wanting to call, and the towns know this, you always, you have your legal counsel, and you know these things crop up. Well, we've, like I said, we've been getting these pro-bonds legal services, we need to be able to rely on legal assistance, and we need to be able to pay for it moving forward. So it's a, it's a big chunk of money in order to have, basically to have an attorney on container that, who knows if they're gonna get paid by us, and when we ask them to help us out, that they will jump on it. We also have no money for any other kind of expenses that the land bank has accrued. At this point, we've basically paid things out of pocket, out of our own pockets, for things like web domain, you know, these are small, but they add up, these expenses for clerical assistance, web, web creation and maintenance, so IT services. We need a, we need a secure place for cloud storage of documents, you know, so we can have all those things. And then there's some remaining startup costs as well, that this, that the money will be put to pay for. So I'm not a salesman, but that's the best pitch I can give you. I welcome any questions that you have, on what we're gonna, you know, spend the money on. What we can guarantee you on a return on that investment is to continue, basically, the very robust organization helping Plainfield move forward for the foreseeable future, for years to come, to see the Command property be redeveloped. That's the ultimate goal, it's not just to do an assessment, it's to come up with a remedial plan, implement that plan, find developers, basically do all of the things that the town would also want to see happen, that used to kind of never happen because there were no such thing as land banks, and towns just didn't have the, the resources to take care of it. We would continue to optimize any funds that we can get, leverage any funds that we can, that we can get, including the Command money, into the future. We would, you know, continue on even buying property or acquiring property if that were, if that were the right thing to do. Acquisition of brownfields is one of the, one of the functions of a land bank, and so we'd be able to do that. And then in the future, you know, and maybe in the very near future, a land bank, a more robust land bank, would also be able to help Plainfield and other communities, but especially Plainfield, with, with other brownfield sites. You don't have to walk very far here to find one that would, would probably need our assistance in some way, shape or form, or at least we'd be, you know, we'd be there for it to help out. There's certainly gonna be a lot more problems and issues within the Royal as we move forward with assessment and cleanup plans, and same sort of things that are facing Musa. So it's our first project, it's our key project, we expect to be working on it further, you know, into the near success as much as the town does. So that's it, do you have any questions, or?
I do have one question, Wayne.
Sure.
Maybe I should know this from past experience, but, so when the land bank actually, say you work with Command, and Command has somebody come in and build, can the land bank have, as a real estate agent, can you get a percentage of that because you cleaned it up, and that will help to finance for the more money for the, the land bank?
Right. Ultimately, and, and, attorneys are better at bringing this than I am, I'm going to give up. Yes, we get to form agreements with, with towns, even with private developers. If we were to acquire a piece of property and clean it up, we could participate, we could generate some revenue from the sale of that property. That all would have to be worked out. It's something that, you know, the land bank would work with the town, Plainfield, on, should come to pass that, that the land bank, that the best option is for the land bank to acquire. So there, there are times, there are a variety of different mechanisms. One of them is to, sometimes properties are sold for a dollar, or they're sold, you know, so there may be a profit, if you will, for the sale of the property. There may also be agreements with, maybe with towns where we do, we're doing a lot of this work, and we're bringing in developer, it gets back on the tax rules, best scenario, it's now, you know, it's privately held, it's no longer a tax burden when it starts paying. There are agreements that we put in place with towns, if everybody's in agreement, where you get to share in the tax revenue for a certain period of time. So one of the ones that gets commonly mentioned is the 550 program, which is like a 50 or 50 percent. I don't know why that's, why that seems to be a thing. I think that there's any agreement that you need that makes sense for the town, and you can work it out, any percentage that is, you know, that the parties agree to. Does that answer your question?
It does.
There are, there are other attorneys, like I said, are much better at explaining this, I'm a geologist, I've never had any money, so I don't really know how to deal with it, but there are a variety of other ways that the land bank can make money. What I've been told is that most of them are out of the horizon somewhere, from, from where we sit right now as an organization, we don't have, you know, we're kind of beholden to foundations and state grants, and potentially from communities that might be able to give a donation. And hopefully, and there's certainly plenty of brownfields in Eastern Connecticut, we will become a self-sustaining organization, not say we wouldn't be getting grants or anything like that, but we wouldn't be reliant on, so beyond those. If we do our job right, and we get grants for cleanup, we'd also be able to conceivably participate in some of these other revenue streams. Does that help?
The $200,000 grant, that's pretty much all, just remediation?
It's, it's actually only assessment at this point.
Help assessment, okay.
Yeah. Right now, DECD capping assessment grants at $200,000 typically. They're capping cleanup grants at $2 million typically. That's not to say they couldn't go over it, that you have to make a special request. Down the road, our next, the way, if I had a crystal ball, what I would tell you is we would make an agreement with Command, we would leverage their, their money, and by the way, that's, that's free from the optics of having a, a company that's paying some, a good chunk of money for the cleanup, means that DECD sees their money going much further. So whatever they, whatever they contribute to the land bank and to the Musa property, they see it as profits being leveraged, you know, by this much other money. So if we fill in some gaps, for example, the buildings that are still remaining, should they be renovated and cleaned up? Command has no obligation to clean up any of this, that's this, or that, or whoever has this building materials are in those buildings. They sold the property, they didn't have any, any orders or anything against them, I would say they had to take care of that, that's done. So their responsibility is essentially underground soil and groundwater only. We could fill in the gap by cleaning up the building, making it more, you know, and that's legitimate use of brownfield funds, it's a great deal of brownfield grants are used for that. We can also clean up other properties, like Keystone Cleaners, should it need any cleanup, or, or some of those other properties that are not in Command's, I think, problem of responsibility. So yeah, we could, we could go for multiple grants, and, and the $2 million, we could get, that's from the state of Connecticut, EPA also obviously has cleanup grants, they've spent some money on, on Indian Oil, and, you know, we'd be seeking those grants as well.
Now you mentioned Command, are they the owners of the property?
They're not.
They are not?
No.
Okay, they're just responsible for the remediation then?
Yeah, it's a very convoluted thing, and it's where the attorneys really earn some of their, their valued assistance and advice, is kind of teasing out all of the complicated issues. They, Command owned the property, they sold it to developers with, with an agreement that the developers would do the cleanup. I guess this money, I think, went into some kind of, it's their escrow account, that was supposed to be spent on the cleanup. of espro account that was supposed to be spent on cleanup. The owners, which I think is?
TD Development?
Well, that depends on what TD you're looking at. It's either TD or private.
Yeah, see, this is where it gets very complex, but there are other parties that were, as I understand it, basically didn't do what they were supposed to. So there've been lawsuits filed both by the state and by Command against the current owners. Command, though, still, even though they sold the property and put money aside for the cleanup of that property, they went back to the court and had it basically give it back to them. The court, the money was basically set aside and was supposed to be used under their agreement by the buyer. Buyer didn't do anything that they were supposed to, so the court gave the money back to Command with the intent that it would be still used. This is my.
And that's the portion of that would be from receivership? Because of how the process worked then?
That's my understanding, yeah.
So this other company still owns it?
They still own it, and that's an encumbrance that needs to be dealt with. We have, under state law, we have the ability to go in and assess the property. Command also has that right, given to them under their, I guess, under the terms of their receivership or is that right to the judge?
Yes.
The reason I'm asking is because before you said that Command may not want to redevelop it at any end. Do they have a choice if they don't own the property?
They don't own it. What I meant by that, I apologize, I may have been, I may have spoken, it isn't that they don't want to, it's that they don't have to.
That's what you said. They could choose not to. If they don't own the property, how can they make that choice?
Yeah, see, this is where we have some leverage over Command. They don't own the property, but they have obligations under orders that issued by the state, by DEEP against them, basically saying, and these go back decades actually, back to the 80s, I believe, there were administrative orders issued by the agency to Command that they clean up their properties. So those orders are still in effect. There are other legal mechanisms that the state can use to compel Command to take certain actions. What they can't do is tell them which, the state's not going to tell them, you must clean it up to residential standards, or you must clean up this area because we're going to, we're going to dig down and put in a basement and that, while that soil has to come out. They will come up with a remedial action plan that might say, this is, we've done all the assessment, this is all we're going to do and it's sufficient. The leverage we have is, they don't have the ability legally to put restrictions on the property and leave contamination behind. Only the owners can do that. So they won't ever close out their obligations unless the owners, whoever that may be at that time, agree to what their solution is. Currently, these are issues that the attorneys are trying to work out with their attorneys. They've been pretty adamant that, you know, we've set aside this money and we're not going to pay it cleanup to a higher standard. It's an industrial property. If you want to put a daycare there or something like that, that's on the future. You know, that's on somebody else down the road. We're going to clean up to the standard for the property as it is. That's how they look at it. What we can do, though, is to come in and say, well, okay, we understand that. You're going to spend a certain amount of money. You may be able to figure out what the differential is between the cost of the cleanup that they're willing to do and that they're obligated to do under law versus what we would say is the best use of that property. And if that is a mixed use, where part of it can be certainly capped and the soil can remain there and it can be industrial or commercial or something, that's fine. What we don't want to do is basically say, well, that's going to be fine for the entire property. One of the things the land bank is doing with the grant line that we've been given is, and we have to clear this with DECD, but is to do a market study of the property. When the state has given us these grants, they said they're for assessment, basically assessment purposes. Well, assessment is considered very broadly by DECD, and so one of the things you could do with it is doing a market study to figure out, well, what's the best use of that property? What could conceivably go there on a property of that size with the utilities that it has and its proximity to the interstate and all of the things that make the property unique? What would be the, or what would be the three or four best uses or something like that? At least with a market study like that, we would be able to make more informed decisions going forward as we negotiate with Command. Because right now, what we're basically saying is, we know you have to clean up. We don't want to say it can never be any residential, which is what they're saying. So let's figure out what the differential is. If it came to pass that Command dug in their deals and said, well, this is all we're going to do, it's all we're obligated to do, we might be able to find some common ground there with them. And DECD again, and EPA conceivably and other agencies might say, that's great that we're getting that much cleaned up. We'll provide you the delta, that differential between, clean up this last little bit to meet residential because your market study says this is a perfect place for, say, multifamily housing or something like that. Whatever it says, whatever that market study says, it's going to be information that we can use going forward to make better decisions.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Yeah.
Have you received any other donations, and if so, where's from?
Can I ask Marion on this?
We have received $5,000 from NICA. I know that Wayne has also applied for a community foundation grant, Jewish City Savings Bank.
Jewish City Savings Bank Foundation has a $5,000 grant as well. We won't hear about that for another month or so.
And if I could also, we received, the land bank received its 501(c)(3) status approval July of last year, which was right in the middle of the pandemic, so we could not approach other municipalities or entities to basically get them on board and seek funding from them.
We are, it's not exactly your question, but we are going everywhere we can right now to try to get funding. The key, as I kind of stressed earlier, the key thing for us is to have an executive director, a paid position that can do all of this work. We definitely see it as a full-time position. And roughly speaking, on an average week or month, I think that that person will be spending the next two years working 30% or 40% of the time on a Musa project. That would be my guess. Roughly a third of their time spent on that one project. But we'd like to get, obviously, get more funding where we can.
All right. And then back to Command. Have they dedicated certain numbers to you for figures? How much are you going to get for donations from them? Or not for donations, but earmarking towards projects? And if so, do they have a ballpark date on when they might be able to do that?
The way that's, the way I understand that that's going to work is that they are actually going to proceed somewhat independently in their assessment. And that money will, so they will control that. And they may have their own consultants do some of their assessment and their cleanup. This is why I said that a lot of the assessment we're going to be doing is sort of filling in gaps that they leave behind, either on parcels that they're not involved with, or on issues that they're not involved with on their parcel. The dollar amount is not clear to me. I believe that the reserve account was in the $3 million.
There's over $3 million in the reserve account. It was initially four, but TD had dipped into that, so it was down to like 3.8 at the time.
What they've said, and which is obviously the case, is that they'll spend what they have to spend. But they've also said, we're not going to spend more than we have to spend. We can understand that. But if it turns out that $3 million doesn't cut it, they've realized they're going to have to do more because they want to get through this process quickly.
I can see the whole project coming in, ballpark of 10 or 11 million dollars to clean everything up and do it the right way, but where do you get the money from? And how long does it take to get to that point? Those are my questions really. And you said the money you're looking for is $300,000 that comes in to execute all of the things you have on that page for a 24-month period?
Roughly a 24-month period, which is, in my experience, about how long it takes for these projects to go through. This grant-funded project is probably an 18-month to two-year project. 18-month is when everything, when all the stars align. We don't think that, we think two months is more of a reasonable number.
Now that we're out of the, I wouldn't say out of COVID, but now that we have a little more breathing room, especially in the light of the fact that the grants have been flowing tremendously to all municipalities, is it something that the land bank would be looking at for applying for larger grants through, as you said, whether it be DECD, whether it be the other that you mentioned?
Absolutely. And that's one of the functions of, in addition to doing some of the heavy lifting for the Musa grant-funded project that we have already, an executive director would be kept very busy and the board, you know, obviously in conjunction with the board, seeking other grants. Everything sort of hinges on successfully delivering on the grants we've already gotten. So the town knows this. And one of the things that you ask for money is, how good did you spend the last month? How well did you perform? We want to outperform their expectations so that they think this is a great place to spend more money. As I said, a $200,000 assessment grant is terrific. It's as much as they can give us, but plan grants are in the millions of dollars, and we would qualify for state and federal assistance.
As I was looking at, you know, EPA, DEEP, you know, DECD itself, pulling all of those numbers together would obviously help out, plus what Command has. I think what the biggest thing in my mind would be, once you see some money in the way you're talking to people, that makes it more valuable to everybody else and say, yes, this is going forward.
Yeah, that's where the attorneys are really helping us out, is trying to make sure that that agreement, that we can get to an agreement with Command that puts the whole project in the best light and the land bank in the best light and demonstrates that this money is being leveraged in a way that's beneficial for the town and the region.
Any questions?
Yep, that's my question.
Yeah.
So.
Sorry.
We put all this money into this remediation, and whoever owns it decides not to redevelop. So we cleaned it up for them, but they don't redevelop. What happens? Because I think you're responsible for redeveloping, right? You can't, you can't take that on yourself as the land bank, as the owner of the property that has to develop it.
Right. We could actually partner with the developer. Land banks are not land trusts. We're not hoping to own a piece of property for perpetuity or for even a long period of time. We're, think of it more as flipping a property. We want to get the property, fix it up, and get it attractive to a developer.
I apologize. There's basically three phases. We do the assessment first, now you realize what you have. And part of that assessment, you mentioned you were doing marketing, trying to figure out where you could get, put into that.
Correct.
The second part would be remediation, which would be then doing the actual cleanup and cleaning to the point where you can actually figure out where you can put things. And the final piece is where you're looking to, I hate to use the phrase, but you're looking to flip the lamp because you know now at this point, you're at a station where you can actually move forward. Now you're looking to add into that.
Yeah, just to expound a little bit on the ownership issue, the properties are taxed delinquent. And one of the potential solutions to the ownership issue is the town could sell the tax lien to the land bank. And cleanup grants can only be applied for by the property owner. And it has to be a municipality or a nonprofit. A private entity owner can only apply for cleanup loans. Whereas if the town did sell the tax lien to the land bank, then the town would foreclose on, the land bank would foreclose on the property and then own the property. We could apply for the cleanup grants, and then once the properties are cleaned up, then we would flip them. It's like Wayne said, we don't want to be property owners, we don't want to be landlords.
So in other words, you can override Command or TD, whoever owns it?
Yeah.
Right, but to your question about.
Wait a second. What if they all of a sudden pay their taxes off and they own it? They paid their taxes off. They're not delinquent anymore. Just the time you get it remediated, they pay their taxes.
See, we wouldn't be able to get a cleanup grant if we didn't own the property.
Okay. So you have to go through the tax lien stamp first?
Yeah.
Right, but there's also other liens on the property to the $2, several million dollars.
13 plus 10 million, yeah.
13 million dollars, so.
Am I wrong in saying, if they were to pay all their liens, then the responsibility for cleanup goes back to them?
Yeah.
So that is why there hasn't been any initiative.
Right. So now you say it's 13 million in liens to other people or?
To them.
They have liens.
Command has a lien on the, filed a lien on the tax records for, they took TD to court and they were awarded over $13 million, which they don't foresee ever being able to recoup, but they have put that lien on the lien record. So if the property is sold, then it'd be in line to get their money.
There's, there are, you know, so many encumbrances on the property that the, not that, you know, the tax lien is maybe in minor one compared to the other liens that are placed on it that TD, Providence, whichever entity actually owns the property now, they would have to pay all those off, including the tax liens, in order to even quit titles so they could do anything with it. They wouldn't be able to do anything for.
And the municipality or the land bank wouldn't have to pay these liens off then?
No.
$2 million is paid, already paid, obviously, but they're not going to be able to do TD Development and or whatever property it is. Doesn't have the money to get, the tax in the back was to say there's 13 million. So that's never going to happen. And obviously, Command would like to have a lien property cleaned up, and that's why they're willing to work with the land bank and the town.
That's the only liens, is with TD and the seller?
TD, well, TD, Command.
Yeah.
Through.
There's no other entities.
Through the court.
There's no other entities.
I believe there are more than 30 liens on the property, but nothing to the magnitude of Command.
No.
Are there any mortgages? I don't think there are any conventional mortgages on the property.
A keystone might be one.
I don't remember.
But it's not that much.
Very, it's certainly loaded with encumbrances. You had, your question earlier, though, was what if a developer just doesn't want to do anything with it, clean it up, and they just want to leave it vacant or something like that? There are many steps between the assessment process that we're in now, or that we soon will begin, and getting to the point of a clean site that can be redeveloped. One of those is to get, obviously, other funding in order to do the cleanup. The, that wouldn't happen unless we have, they are working with other professionals to try to do a market study and then market the property. We find, in my business, I run into a lot of developers who would love to get a piece of property like this, even an impaired property. They see it as a great thing, you know, especially if it's in a downtown area, they look for these things. And the phrase that's often used is, you know, if only, or but for, but for these issues. If I were to come in there tomorrow and I would build this, we need between now and the time that we're going to be applying for cleanup grants to fill in any gaps that Command doesn't do, we need to be marketing the property. Because behind the scenes, we're going to need to be working diligently with the town and whatever other allies we can find to work with us to basically put the property out there. If we find the right developer that comes in with a plan, one of the projects of this, as an aside, Marion and I worked on in Thompson, was the Riverdale project of the North Groger Dale, if you're familiar with it. It's one of the largest mills. It's probably as large as the Panino Mills in Norwich. Huge property. The developer who came along had said, I'm going to redevelop this property. He knows, he knows these projects. He knows that it's like a 10-year project or more. People thinking, well, this guy's coming in on his white horse, he's going to fix this place for us. You know, when can we go to your restaurant? Well, you know, next year, the year after. He said, no, no, it's a 10-year project. So what we need is So what we need is to get savvy developers who know that there are some hurdles we have to go through, but they see it as this fantastic project and frankly, they're going to be putting their finances together and everything else and that's going to take years. But if we can run parallel with the developer, finish off whatever issues might be lingering on the property, we can, you know, while they're getting their architect plans together and the other, other things, we work in parallel, but we, we, it's a nice synergy there because we're cleaning up the property, we're making, getting rid of some of these issues, maybe we'll put in those, you know, maybe getting that liability relief, getting a covenant, not a sue on the property. That's like old for a developer when he's looking to get funding from, from HUD, for example, if it was housing or from some other source. And likewise, their interest in the property, and if they have a letter of intent, if they're moving forward, we can use that to say, this isn't going to be a vacant lot and we're done with it, we're going to clean it up and it's going to be this. And so the agencies, you know, people kind of pile on and say, I, I want to be part of this. That's true of people like DE, and DECD and EPA. It becomes a, a, uh, all, you know, all for one kind of, everybody kind of merging together and making, uh, making the project successful. So the scenario of a vacant lot, if, if no one came along, if we were totally unable to find anybody interested in the property, which can't imagine that would be the case, we, we won't get to the endpoint likely. We might, we may end up with, I, I, we may get to the end endpoint, which would be Command will clean up to commercial industrial standards. It's, it's great, it, it's much better than it is now, but it may not be the best use, it may not be consistent with what the town wants to see there. So we, we filled that gap, we, we leveraged resources and we find, we, we kind of knocked down all of the hurdles that make, you know, could get through all of that so that at the end of the day, we have a, a project that, um, is consistent with what the town wants to see.
I, I think where I'm getting confused, because you had said, what did I write down? Command may not want to redevelop in the end, okay? Because you said that, it brought up all these thoughts, okay? So what, where's the timeline? When do you take over the property so that you're assured of redevelop, redeveloping it? And Command can't stop it or TD or anybody can't stop it? At what point do you take over the property?
Yeah, if I said they may not want to redevelop it, that I misspoke.
Or they have the option not to.
Not, they're not, you all, they're not involved with the redevelopment. They've assured us throughout all our negotiations that they, they want to see the property redeveloped, that their goal is consistent with ours.
They're not the owners though.
But they're not the owners, so they don't have the ability, they're not going to be redeveloping it. They're going to be making it available for redevelopment at the end of their cleanup. What I was saying, what I meant to say, if I didn't say this clearly, was that their cleanup standard may not be.
I, I understood that. I, I understand that, okay. But at what point do you say to me, okay, now we have possession of it, we are going to redevelop it? At what point do you tell me that?
Yeah, that.
After the assessment, after you get monies to clean it up? At what point?
That, that's a great question and I don't have a great answer for you right now.
So it could be at the end?
It will be.
And then you don't get control of it and it doesn't get done? It could, it could get cleaned up, but not re-, redeveloped? It's possible.
It's possible. I, I suppose, um, you know, there's obviously a lot of work that we need to do through this whole process and.
Not, not saying that, you know, cleaning it up is a bad thing. Not for that, you know, that's a step closer. But I would like to see, you know, if you're going to pay millions of dollars, you'd like to see it redeveloped.
Right.
Obviously.
Right.
So it, where's the guarantee? Where's the, you know, that you're going to take it over and redevelop it?
Yeah, well, the, the, uh, when you, when we get an assessment grant on a property like this, the state says, well, we know that there's so many unknowns about this property. This is a good investment in kind of filling in data gaps so that we can go to the next step. The next step is you move the decimal place once and you start to talk about millions of dollars, hundreds of thousands of minutes for cleanup. When you get to that point, the state is going to want more assurance that you've got an end use for this that's, that's feasible. Ideally, you've got, already got developers interested in it, you know, they, they may have a contract with the entity that owns it. If we get to the point where we've got people coming in and being very interested in the project and redeveloping it, the, the land bank at that point may say, this is, we, we need to own it now because we have to control it. We have to make those decisions. So we're going to go to the town, we're going to figure out, have our attorneys figure out with the town in terms of how we, how we acquire the property. Is it through assignment of the tax lien or some other mechanism? But at, at, at some point in there, I can't tell you whether it's, you know, two years from now or three years from now, it's likely, not sure, not a sure thing, but it's likely that Land Bank would own the property. If somebody came in with, you know, guns blazing, we're going to fix this place up and we have the perfect redevelopment plan, we may act as, as an intermediary but not actually own the property. That, that these are, these are legal questions that geologists should never try to answer. So I won't go into it, but you probably know more about it than I do, but as I understand it, you know, there's other ways that we can foster, uh, or, or facilitate rather a, a developer to come in as part of the property. But it's, it's more likely because of the complexity of the properties, and there's multiple properties here too, so they may have different solutions to each one, but it's more likely that the land bank will eventually own the property, is my guess.
And I only have one other question.
Sure.
How many towns are involved in these in Connecticut land bank?
There we are, at this point, is it 42?
42 towns, but actively are.
Our region is 42 towns and I think that actively there are, there's participation from about a third of those. The ones that have been most active are up and down the 395 corridor, so Thompson and Tutton, Killenley, Plainfield, uh, and then we've had some interest from Wyndham, Brooklyn, Ashford where I live, neither or not to ask this last question, we, we helped Stonyton get a grant, uh, and Stonyton seems to be very interested in working with us, you know, moving forward.
Monville, that's not.
I'm sorry?
Was it?
Monville, we've had meetings with Monville, Spray, Whizzle, we talked to them, uh, but the, the majority of the board and the majority of the industry has, has really been, you know, from Plainfield north to the Mass line, you know, but these are the most active towns.
You answered my other question, yes. If any, if you had reached out to any other municipalities who were funded, you answered that.
We, we, and we are today, and I, today I, I was doing the best job I could to try to get some money from Monville. And there may still be an opportunity that, that, um, going, going forward. Obviously, the Musa project is our big project, is our priority, is, you know, and, you know, I'm grateful for the opportunity to talk to you about it, obviously, Dr. Arco, you know, we wouldn't even have this, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So, you know, it's, it's great to have the opportunity to talk to you about it.